The following is a production of Cary TV, the Town of Cary's government access channel.
Call to order, the July 23 meeting of the Cary Town Council. I want to thank you for joining us from your home this evening as we continue to follow the governor's state of emergency orders. We are streaming tonight's meeting virtually. The majority of the council here is here present with me tonight. We have all had our temperatures checked before entering the chambers. And as you can see, we've adjusted our seating so that we can maintain proper social distancing. Each person has been given hand sanitizer and a mask and to use as they deem appropriate. To meet the requirements for the remote meetings law, we do have one council member participating remotely through WebEx, and that is Councilmember Ed Yerha. Mr. Yerha, thank you for joining us remotely. And since you had the ceremonial opening, I'll call on you to start us off.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I'd like to share a few quotes with you, quotes that were found in area newspapers from the year 1918, 1918. And first give a shout out to Cary historian Carla Michaels, who dug up these newspapers for me. First quote, "All the schools, churches, theaters, picture shows, and places of public gathering have been order-closed by the Board of Health. All social functions have been postponed indefinitely. Many of the drugstores and other places where drinks are served have adopted the plan of using paper cups at the fountains." Another quote, "The high school building is being used as an emergency hospital, and the Good Shepherd Hall has been converted into a nursery. All the hospitals are filled to overflowing, and work is practically at a standstill." Then there seems to be a steady improvement in the epidemic here, although it is practically impossible to get the proof in black and white because very few of the new cases are being reported and none of the recoveries, hence the difficulty in getting accurate data that will convince. "The churches have voluntarily closed, and the majority of the business establishments are working under hardships because of the depletion of their working forces. The Board of Health this afternoon ordered all barber shops to close for the remainder of the week, and the stores to close at 7:00 on Saturday evening." And finally, "Due to the epidemic, the schools were closed for about two months. A large number of students could not complete their grades for the year." Who says that history doesn't repeat itself? We're living in historic times currently today. But if we follow the guidelines that have been provided to us, we wash our hands, we avoid crowds, stay physically distant, and when unable to do so, wear a face covering, please, it shouldn't be that difficult to get COVID-19 out of today's newspapers and instead relegate it to just the history books where it belongs. In the meantime, of course, be safe, be kind, be cary, and please join in the pledge of allegiance to the flag.
I pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Yerha. We now move to the adoption of the agenda. I would entertain a motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
There's a motion.
Second.
And a second. We have a roll call vote, starting with Mr. Yerha.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim France.
Aye.
Councilmember Lou.
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Bush.
Aye.
And I vote aye as well, so the motion passes unanimously. We now move to recognitions, reports, and presentations. And tonight, our only report is the manager's update, so I'll call on Manager Stiegel for his update.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Council. During our budget discussions this spring, the theme of holding steady then pushing forward emerged. This concept reflected the desire to balance keeping Cary-Cary while also recognizing the uncertain financial impacts from the COVID-19 pandemic. I remain in awe of the council's foresight and commitment to our values, which the FY-21 budget demonstrates: safety, service, maintenance, investments in the future, financial stewardship, and the continued drive to implement the vision of the Imagine Cary Community Plan. At the same time, the fiscal year 21 budget recognizes the pandemic's immediate and still largely unknown long-term impacts to our revenue. For the last three years, Cary has taken advantage of a rolling quarterly budget process that allows council to adapt and pivot to changing conditions and opportunities. I'm looking forward to our upcoming quarterly meeting next month, where we will have a more in-depth look at our financial picture and revenue forecasts. In the meantime, I'll turn it over to Karen Mills to share a quick preview of the early indications from April and May from last fiscal year. Karen?
Thank you, Mr. Stiegel. Good evening, Council. Just four short weeks ago, you adopted the budget that Mr. Stiegel was talking about, and it was one of our most challenging years to project revenues and expenditures in the midst of a pandemic. You had a lot of questions about the budget, and you expressed interest in more information surrounding financial updates. Here tonight to share the latest financial news that we've learned from working on that Q4 report and in preparation for the upcoming quarterly meeting. The bottom line is, just so far, I think the pandemic has had an economic impact on Cary's resources of at least $10 million since mid-March. We've incurred over $4 million in expenditures related to the pandemic. We squeezed that out of our existing 2020 budget, resources that we redirected from ongoing services and priorities. And for revenues, while we're still working to quantify the exact magnitude of those 2020 revenue shortfalls, we know that two of the largest areas with significant losses are sales tax and parks, recreation, and cultural resource fee revenues, which combined are projected to be about $6 million below budget. To show you a little bit more detail about the sales tax revenue, this chart shows you the percent increases in sales taxes that we were enjoying from the strong economy prior to March when compared to the prior year. Cary's share of those sales tax revenues for the first eight months of the 2020 fiscal year were averaging 9% over the prior year. When the shutdown came in mid-March, and our sales taxes went from 12% growth in February to a 7% loss for March. Just a week ago, we learned about our April sales tax receipts, and they were down 16%, which is 23% less than if we had continued our 9% growth pattern. We won't know the final sales tax picture for 2020 until mid-September, but if our economic loss in sales tax revenue continues at this pace, it could be as much as $3 million. We do know more about our parks, recreation, and cultural resource revenues because those revenues just simply stopped cold, and in fact, we refunded $1.3 million of revenue to our citizens that we had already collected when we canceled programs and venue rentals. Our FY-2020 revenues were right on target with FY-19, so it's fair to say that compared to our revenue last year of $8.5 billion, our year-end revenues of $5.3 million are $3.2 million short. As I mentioned and as Mr. Stiegel talked about, we're working on your quarterly report and the quarterly meeting to address even more details about Cary's financial plans and the 21 budget. I know that the 21 picture is better than it would have been thanks to the prudence and the responsibility that you demonstrated in a very difficult budget and tax rate decision, and I'm grateful for that. Given what we've seen in just the last month, we can be more assured that we'll need those resources to maintain the services that our citizens expect and that we're on a financially sustainable path to continue to afford the investments that are most important to you and our Cary residents. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions now or at our.
Questions for Ms. Mills.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mills. That was excellent. Okay, we're going to move to our next item, Public Speaks Out. Instructions for submitting comments for our Public Speaks Out were attached to the posted agenda, and participants had an opportunity to send comments through email, 311 online portal, and regular mail. All comments received before noon today were emailed to council, and a printed copy was given to council at tonight's meeting. At this time, I'll open up Public Speaks Out and call on staff to summarize any comments received.
We received two written comments, one from April Slaughter regarding no more housing due to concern of school space, and then the second written comment was from Britt Cox, assigning an official name to Heater Alley.
Okay, very good. And I understand we have two people on the line who wish to speak.
Yes.
And each of these speakers has three minutes for their comments, and I'll be watching the timer to keep track of the time, and I'll let the speakers know when they've reached three minutes. And I'll call on the town clerk here to recognize our first speaker.
Our first speaker is Harrison Anger. Mr. Anger, would you confirm that you're the correct speaker by giving your name and address?
Yes, I'm here.
Go ahead.
Hello?
Please proceed.
My name is Jay Harrison Anger. I live 101 Pine Stroh Drive in the Brookstone subdivision of Cary. And I called last week when I learned that Cary had permitted lawn services to start as early as 7:00 in the, I believe it's 7:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. or 7:30 to 9:30 for cutting grass. I was not aware of that, but every Monday morning around 8:00, the lawn service next door to me shows up, and he has a riding mower that apparently with no muffler on it, and it joked me out of bed. These kinds of noises affect me, and it stemmed from my having been in service in the Korean War at the Chosum Reservoir, and it discombobulated, and it took me most of the day to get myself together after being awakened by the noise that that lawnmower generates at that time of morning. And when I called and talked to a clerk, they suggested maybe I could call in and talk to the council about my reaction to that early morning morn of the grass.
Thank you, Mr. Anger.
Our next speaker is Gabe Talton. Mr. Talton, would you confirm you're the correct speaker by giving your name and address?
Hello, I'm Gabe Talton, 318 South Academy Street.
Thank you. Please proceed.
Well, Council, thanks for hearing me tonight. I call in in support of the Bus Rapid Transit. I was excited to see that agenda item on the meeting for later tonight. I'm a transit user. In the pre-COVID time, I would take the bus and the train between here and downtown Durham, where my office is, and I'm also on the Go Triangle Citizen Advisory Board. So I've gotten to see a number of public presentations about the Bus Rapid Transit, and I just think it's such an exciting opportunity for East Cary and downtown Cary. I also want to voice support for, I don't know what route has been chosen or exactly what the process is, but particularly the route that's slated to go down Cary Town Center Boulevard and take a right onto Mainard Road. That just sets up so many great, you know, possibilities for East Cary, creates the Fenton and the Cary Mall redevelopment as unique in the region, a place that's served by very frequent mass transit, a shopping mode like that. There's a number of large sites that are, you know, up for affordable housing redevelopment along Mainard where that route would go, and I think that's so cool. And I think also our downtown Cary residents and everybody will love to be able to jump on a bus and go to Dix Park in Raleigh when that gets completed because that's going to be right on the route down Western Boulevard. So I'm in support of that. And in conclusion, I'll just say that, you know, we often get to hear in the discussion about, we wish that the town could take more bold action on housing affordability and greenhouse gas emission issues, especially around trees, and, but you know, just the way that it works, we don't often get to take bold action. That's just not legally possible for the town. But in this, the Bus Rapid Transit, this is a bold, exciting action the town can take that will have a positive impact on both housing affordability and greenhouse gas emissions. Thanks, guys.
Thank you. Any other speakers for Public Speaks Out?
No, that was all.
Okay, I'll close Public Speaks Out, and we'll move on to our consent agenda, which is item 4, if you're following along. For the benefit of people watching our meeting on TV, I'll take a moment to review our consent agenda items. Please keep in mind that one vote approves all of these items. On the consent agenda, we have Minutes, Adjustment to Adopted Meeting Schedule, Sidewalk Improvements Bid, Year 2020 Construction Bid Award, Grant Funding Adjustments for White Oak Creek Greenway, Black Creek Greenway, and Higgins Greenway, Conveyance of Wake County Property to Town of Cary Dominion Estates, 2805 Retchi Annexation, Consent for Relocation of Graves Alfius Carpenter Family Cemetery Petty Farm Road, Consent for Relocation of Graves Mooring Cemetery Kitty Hawk Drive, Lease Agreement with Wake County for the Black Creek Greenway Phases 1, 2, 5 Renovation Project, Condemnation Resolutions to Secure Necessary Easements for the Intersection Improvement Project Bid Year 2020. Would council members like any of these items pulled from the consent agenda for discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda.
So moved.
There's a motion.
Second.
And a second. Discussion. Roll call vote, Mr. Yerha.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim France.
Aye.
Councilmember Lou.
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Bush.
Aye.
I vote aye as well, and the motion passes unanimously. That takes us to public hearings. The same rules apply for public hearings as applied for Public Speaks Out with one exception. Speakers now have five minutes instead of three for their comments. As for all our public hearings, the instructions for submitting comments for tonight's public hearings were included in the public hearing notice. Participants had the opportunity to send comments through email, 311 online portal, and regular mail, and all comments received before noon today were emailed to the council and a printed copy was given to council at tonight's meeting. Our first public hearing is item 5.1, Consideration of Right-of-Way Closing Portions of Old White Oak Church Road. Real estate staff member Kelly Prummer will introduce the item, and council may take action. Ms. Prummer. Ms. Prummer, I haven't met you, and I hope I'm not mispronouncing your name.
Wonderful job. Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. As the mayor indicated, we are here to hold a public hearing for the consideration of abandonment for portions of Old White Oak Church Road right-of-way. On June 25th of this year, council adopted a resolution of intent to close portions of Old White Oak Church Road, which called for a public hearing. Our purpose tonight is to hold this hearing and to take comments on whether closing these portions of right-of-way will be detrimental to the public interest or the property rights of any person. Here is an aerial photo of the White Oak Church Road area. As you can see, Old White Oak Church Road is located on the northeast side of the roundabout, which was installed as part of the development of White Oak Elementary School as a safety feature. These areas illustrated in white are the areas of right-of-way Capital Properties of Raleigh is requesting to be abandoned, known as Old White Oak Church Road. These sections of Old White Oak Church Road are no longer in service due to the previous realignment of White Oak Church Road and the current development of Autumnwood North Subdivision. The closure, if approved, will benefit the public interest by eliminating the underlying right-of-way that is no longer needed. Additional benefits include increased safety, better facilitating traffic flow, and allows the adjacent subdivision to better integrate into the existing street network and achieve a more favorable layout. Adjjoining property owners were given notice of the closure, and none are deprived reasonable means of access. In accordance with the North Carolina General Statute 168-299 and the Town of Cary Policy Statement 44, staff has published public hearing notifications for four consecutive weeks, placed signs at the intersection of Old White Oak Church Road at Henley View Place and Ridgeback Road. NCDOT has abandoned its maintenance responsibility of Old White Oak Church Road. Pending public comments, staff recommends that after the public hearing, the council authorize the mayor to execute the street closing order and staff to record the order at the Wake County Registered Deeds Office. This concludes my presentation. The applicant is on the line to answer any questions. Therefore, at this time, I turn the public hearing over to the council. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Prummer. Now's the time for the public hearing for the consideration of right-of-way closing portions of Old White Oak Church Road. And at this time, I'll call on Ms. Prummer once again to summarize any comments received before noon today.
I receive the first from Mr. Randall Daniels of 1405 Wright Oak Church Road, who has expressed concern regarding ease of access southbound on White Oak Church Road. Mr. Daniels currently has unaffected access to his property on White Oak Church Road. However, should he develop his property in the future, Capital Properties has placed a driveway apron on to Henley View Place and agreed to grant an access easement to Mr. A second was from Ms. Betty Parker with Wake County Public School System. It was in support of the request to close and abandon the sections of Old White Oak Church Road as described in the proposed street closing order. Mayor, that concludes my submitted comments for this hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Prummer. And the applicant is on the line?
Yes, but they're not giving any comments.
Okay.
Just here for questions.
Okay, are there any live callers?
No live callers.
Okay, then I'll close the public comment portion of the public hearing and open it up to council members for questions or comments or a motion.
I have a question. This road closure or right-of-way closing, the request is being done by Capital Properties, but are they looking to purchase this land from the town so that it benefits that adjoining neighborhood? I'm curious what their end game is.
No, ma'am, we're not planning on developing the property.
Could you repeat that one more time, please?
Yes, sir, we are not planning on developing the property. It's shown on our current construction plans, and it's not being lauded out, it's undeveloped.
And it will remain undeveloped?
Ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
And who was the speaker for the record?
Doug Laurie.
No, to Laurie, yes.
Doug Laurie.
I'm sorry.
Doug Laurie.
Doug Laurie, to Laurie, I got it. Sorry, that was confusing. Thank you very much. Other comments or questions? So to follow up on Laurie's question, I mean, who retains ownership of the property?
Our engineers on the.
I mean, is it town-owned property? Is it?
Right, is it right-of-way? Is it Wake County? Who is it?
Is it the?
Whose is it?
Owner of the property at the subdivision?
I'm not specifically, myself, I don't know the specifics of this, but with road closures, abutting property owners, they'll own the land, it'll go back to them, half and half. One half will go right to the abutting side on one side and then the other.
And is the town responsible for eliminating the road or making the road go away, or has that become the property owner's responsibility?
Typically, it's on the property owner to deal with that.
Good questions. Any other questions? Not, I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the street closing order for Old White Oak Creek, excuse me, Old White Oak Church Road.
Second. There's a motion and a second discussion. Roll call vote, Mr. Yerha.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim France.
Aye.
Councilmember Lou.
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Aye.
Councilmember Bush.
Aye.
I vote aye as well, and the motion passes unanimously. Thank you, Ms. Prummer. We now move to our second public hearing, 2801 7117 Carpenter Fire Station Road Annexation. Assistant Planning Director Deborah Grannan will introduce the item. Council will not take action on this annexation tonight, and the item will return to council at a future meeting for action. Ms. Grannan.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and Council. For your consideration this evening is a request for annexation of 0.82 acres of town-owned property located at 7117 Carpenter Fire Station Road, approximately 350 feet east of the intersection with Highcroft Drive. Cary purchased this. Carey purchased this land in January of 2019. The property is zoned residential 40, it's contiguous to Carey's corporate limits, and it's located in our ETJ. The subject property is part of a larger assemblage of Carey-owned land, which is already in Carey's corporate limits, but thanks to the passage of the Carey Community Bonds, will be part of a future town-owned neighborhood park. Also, the Carpenter Fire Station Road widening project needed right-of-way across the property frontage, so Carey now desires to annex the property to facilitate efficient park design and construction. The approximately 20-acre park is planned to offer varying levels of recreation and social interaction, including sporting events, informal play areas, and quiet spaces. Following the public hearing, staff recommends that council defer final action to a future meeting. This concludes staff's presentation.
Thank you, Ms. Grannan. Now's the time for public hearing, 20A17117 Carpenter Fire Station Road Annexation. And at this time, I'll call on Deborah Grannan once again to summarize any comments received.
Thank you, mayor. We did not receive any comments on this request.
Thank you, Ms. Grannan. Do we have any live callers?
No live callers.
Not that there would be dead callers, but callers on the line.
What a dad joke.
Okay, I'll close the public comment portion of the meeting and open it up to council members for questions or comments. This comes back to us at a future meeting.
I'm just curious why it comes back to us and why we just don't annex it now.
That was gonna be the question I was gonna ask. We're asking ourselves to wait to give ourselves an answer to ourselves.
Well, I mean, we have so many annexations that we just annex the same night we have the public hearing. I'm just curious why not on this one?
So it's gotta be a process thing, right?
It is. It has to do with the remote hearing law, the remote reading law.
Oh, yeah, all right.
And just out of an abundance of caution, we're recommending that you wait to vote on it.
Okay, very good. We'll see this at a later date. We now move to our third public hearing, 19REZ32 Carey Park SF13 PDD Amendment. Assistant Planning Director Deborah Grannan will once again introduce the item. Council will not take action on this rezoning. Instead, it will be referred to our Planning and Zoning Board for their review and recommendation to return to council at a future date. Ms. Grannan.
Thank you, mayor. For your consideration is a request to amend a 9.56-acre portion of the Carey Park Plan Development District. The site is located in the northwest quadrant of McCrimmon Parkway and NC 540, just west of Panther Creek High School. The property is zoned PDD major. It's part of the Carey Park Plan Development District, which was originally named Panther Creek, and it's designated in the PDD as common open space. The Carey Park PDD defines common open space as the land area reserved as open space within the project excluded from development parcels and will be maintained by the Appropriate Owners' Association. These areas will remain undisturbed except as required for construction of street, pathways, utilities, and water quality devices. On the original PDD document, the property was part of a 13-acre open space parcel. The portion along McCrimmon Parkway, which was originally called Panther Creek Parkway, was subdivided from the subject site. And then in 2008, the Carey Park developer from date multiple parcels of open space, approximately 60 different parcels throughout the Carey Park PDD, to the Carey Park Property Owners' Association, but did not convey this 9.56-acre parcel. This parcel was then sold to a private owner in 2018. So this private owner today is seeking to amend this portion of the PDD by creating a new district, SF13, and allowing development of up to 15 detached residential units. We wanted to make a couple early observations about the request. The site is separated from most of the Carey Park PDD by 540 and McCrimmon Parkway. Also, the Carey Park PDD currently exceeds the minimum open space that was guaranteed with the original PDD document, and it would continue to do so even if it were removed. But staff also observes that large amounts of open space provided in the original PDD were part of the justification of the smaller lot sizes and development intensities that were found elsewhere in the PDD. Specifically, the applicant is proposing the following: a maximum of 15 detached dwelling units, a minimum lot size of 8,000 square feet, a minimum of 2,500 square feet of community gathering space, twice what the LDO would require, the 100-foot-wide highway corridor buffer, which was committed to with the original PDD and is required by the LDO, would remain. The proposed amendment also states that sidewalk would be provided per the LDO, which only requires them on one side of a residential street, but this would be a decrease from the original PDD, which committed to sidewalk on both sides of the street. A preliminary analysis against the goals and policies of Carey Community Plan policies find that the live, engage, and shape chapters apply most directly. The housing type proposed is not unique to this area, but provision of housing in general may partially support one of the live chapter policies. We have found, however, that the shape chapter is most relevant. So while a residential development might be a reasonable transition between 540 and residential developments to the north and west, the proposal would remove a large portion of existing natural buffer transition that's been provided for many years by this open space. In regard to aesthetics, the plan speaks to both private and public views, so removal of mature, existing vegetation on this parcel could lessen the quality of the views from travelers on 540, but more so for residents of Ridgefield Farms to the west. The Future Growth Framework Map designates the area as mixed neighborhood, which puts an emphasis on master plan developments with amenities and common open space. This designation supports planned development districts, which are meant to exercise exceptional design, including the provision of open space. And as I noted previously, this open space parcel was part of the master planned Carey Park PDD, which helped to balance the development intensities and the reduced dimensional standards. So if it's removed from the PDD, it may not meet the full intent of a PDD definition. Carey's GIS maps indicate the property may be impacted by stream buffers, and field determination of such features will be required at the time of development plan review. The property is landlocked with no road frontage since there's a small strip of common open space that separates this site from McCrimmon Parkway. If rezoned for development, the only access would be from the property to the north, which is currently in development plan review. There is a future greenway trail along the eastern edge of the property, which is part of the outer loop greenway corridor. The southern end of this segment will connect to the Morris Branch Greenway corridor. If the rezoning were to be approved and a development plan submitted, the developer would be responsible for providing an easement for this greenway section, but would not be required to commit to its construction. A neighborhood meeting was held at Town Hall on March 4th. 14 nearby property owners attended. Questions related to lot size, preservation of trees and buffers, access to the property, and whether a greenway connection would be provided. Staff received an email from the property management group for the Carey Park HOA, who asked what was proposed and if access would be needed through the HOA property. And then we had one WebEx meeting with a group of three citizens with questions related to tree removal. Staff mailed property public hearing notification to property owners within 800 feet of the subject property, which exceeds both state and LDO requirements. This concludes staff's presentation. Representing the applicant, Mrs. Glenda Top with Glenda S. Top and Associates is on the line to share her remarks. And then, following her comments and the public hearing, I will be available for your questions.
Thank you, Ms. Grannan.
Mrs. Top, you may continue.
Thank you, Ms. Grannan. I'll recognize Ms. Top at this time.
Can you all hear me?
Yes, ma'am.
This is very different for me, so it's nice to be there, even though I'm not in person. Good evening, mayor, members of council. I'm representing the Carey Park PDD Amendment, and I am working in conjunction with the Morningstar Law Group, who is the applicant's contact for this rezoning. Staff has done a very thorough job going over the basics of the proposed PDD amendment. I will briefly highlight a few of the key points. As staff points out, conditions have been added in response to requests raised by the neighbors at the neighborhood meeting. We have increased the minimum lot size for this parcel from 3,000 square feet minimum to 8,000 square feet, which is more than double. We have also committed to providing a minimum of 2,500 square feet on the western property line, with disturbances only allowed as per the LDO. Originally, we planned on having this 20-foot buffer as part of the building lots, but with the neighbors and staff's guidance, we have adjusted this in order to have the 20-foot buffer be a part of an HOA-maintained open space lot. It is also important to note that the proposed PDD amendment commits to providing an easement for the greenway, which can be extended towards McCrimmon Parkway. Our understanding is that a portion of that greenway is also being dedicated with the development of the area just north of this parcel, so this dedication will help complete that greenway. And looking at the original Carey Park PDD map, this portion of open space is on the north side of the PDD, disconnected from the rest of the Carey Park PDD. In 2018, the developer sold this portion of open space, 9.56 acres, to a private individual rather than granting it to an HOA as the put originally contemplated. As far as we know, this is the only open space in the PDD which the HOA never took over. This modest development is consistent with the surrounding area and existing land use pattern. It will provide a logical transition from the existing single-family to the north and west to 540. This portion of open space has never been maintained as open space by the HOA in Carey Park PDD. The required open space of Carey Park PDD is approximately 74 acres, and there is currently approximately 135 acres of open space in the PDD, and that includes the 9.56 acres. If proposed amendment is approved, there will still be the amount of open space required for the Carey Park PDD. In the Carey Community, the Future Growth Framework Map designates this parcel as a mixed neighborhood. 15 single-family homes is a predominant use type in this development category. It is also important to note that the 100-foot quarter buffer adjacent to NC 540 is being maintained. Furthermore, given the constraints of the parcel, only about 4.3 acres of the parcel is being used for residential lots. We believe the proposed residential use will provide a logical transition from the slightly larger lots in Ridgefield Farms to NC 540. It is also our opinion that area residents will benefit because the 100-foot-wide highway quarter buffer will remain, and the greenway will be dedicated, which would allow the property finally to fill its original purpose as meaningful usable open space. Like to thank the council for the opportunity to address them, and we hope for your support, and we look forward to hearing from you tonight with any suggestions that you might have to make this proposed rezoning a benefit to the town. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Top. Now's the time for the public hearing for 19REZ32 Carey Park Single Family 13 PDD Amendment. And I'll once again call on Deborah Grannan to summarize any comments that we have received before noon today that were emailed and were printed for council. Ms. Grannan.
Thank you. There were 18 comments that were received for tonight's public hearing. Two of them were requests to call in. Most of the comments referenced the value of tree preservation, for air quality, noise attenuation, aesthetics, and visual buffering, and to protect the environment. The citizens who called in with those comments included Kristen Stone, Gretchen Stoughton, Megan Spachala, Mary Ann Bariso, Nick Bariso, Patty Ordones, Vinay Barsu, Patrick Tembetta, Crystal Johnson, Richard Wilson, and Michael Dixon. Dan Porter and Mary Collins called in, asking for open space to be preserved and noted the inappropriateness of the site for residential development due to high-tension power lines and its proximity to 540. B. Sansa suggested Carey stop building new residential development to avoid a glut of homes in the market. Lindsay Kalova noted school overcrowding in the area and asked for this property to be a park. And Carey Smith simply asked for a no vote. Mayor, this concludes the submitted comments for this hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Grannan. This time, I'll recognize our clerk for our call-in speakers.
Yes, we have two call-in speakers on the line. The first is Michael Dixon. Mr. Dixon, would you confirm you're the correct speaker by giving your name and address?
Yes, hi, Michael Dixon, 441 Spokane Way.
Thank you, please proceed.
Hi, thanks for the opportunity to voice some substantial concerns that I share with not only my neighbors, but also the broader Ridgefield Farms community, many of which you've heard already. But importantly, not only did we pay a premium for our homes, but many of us on Spokane Way specifically, to which this parcel backs up to, we also paid a premium for our lots due to the beautifully wooded area behind us. We were told the property was not able or suitable to be developed on because of environmental issues, the size and shape, and was essentially landlocked with limited access, and of course, would provide protection and significant noise buffer from Highway 540, which is literally just a few hundred yards away. So that said, our top concerns are, one, obviously, the significant impact and exposure to increased noise. The current proposal, I believe, calls for maintaining a 100-foot buffer of existing pine trees along 540. This would not be sufficient, given they are very mature and really offer no ground-level noise buffer. The greenway that would be extended through this buffer would then, again, require removal of additional trees within that range, making it even worse. So how to ensure and provide proper sufficient noise abatement? Second area is around, again, the degradation and impact to the property values of the existing homes in Ridgefield Farms, giving lot sizes, home sizes, building materials, consistency of covenances, and, most importantly, home prices of what's being proposed for development. The amendment of 8,000 square foot per lot is still less than the adjacent homes, and I have not seen any provision of home prices and quality that have been stated. So this is a big concern. If building is ultimately allowed, home sizes, materials, and, most importantly, selling prices should be equal to or higher than those in Ridgefield Farms to which these homes would be adjacent to. And being directly up against a highway, I think, will certainly make that difficult to do. And lastly, the buildability and integrity of the land where these homes would be built on. We were told that the developer had some sort of environmental survey indicating there were no streams or watershed or issues rezoning. However, in the center of the property, running southwardly, is an obvious active stream bed. I did submit a few pictures and a video on this, and honestly don't understand how homes could be developed on top of land that has an active stream bed, or even worse, impact runoff from the other surrounding homes, certainly when storms come through. So again, some pretty significant concerns beyond just destroying the natural beauty and what little undisturbed open space there is in the community. You know, it's not clear how a development of this property is really being allowed, given the premise and why many of us, you know, had bought into the community in the first place. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Dr. Wilson. Dr. Wilson, will you give your name and address to confirm that you are the right speaker?
Richard Wilson, 306 Oak Ridge Road.
Thank you, please proceed.
Council members and staff, this case offers an opportunity for the town to seriously consider the environmental policies of Chapter 8 of the 2040 Plan as they relate to development decisions. The 9.56-acre section of wooded land provides important ecosystem services for the current residents of Ridgefield Farms, who, as Mr. Dixon explained, bought their property with the understanding that the land in question would remain undisturbed open space. That 9.56 acres does these things every day. It provides a buffer against the sound of 540, a 100-foot buffer will offer minimal sound attenuation. It provides cooling to counteract the heat island effect of 540. The cooling would extend at least 400 feet into the subdivision, which is about the diameter of the wooded area itself. It provides air quality benefits, which would probably extend into Ridgefield Farms at least a similar distance. Nothing else can provide those services. The benefits I refer to are documented in the Nature The benefits I refer to are documented in the nature conservancy document, which I gave you, I'll link to in the written version of my comments. We all benefit from the presence of an adequate tree canopy. Incremental loss to development has cost the town roughly 441 acres per year of tree canopy over the past 20 years. The regulation and supervision of replacement tree planting and maintenance has been so lax that there's effectively no prospect for canopy gain through most planting done to date. Conservation of existing canopy is essential. I believe that in the long term, these considerations outweigh any benefits from granting this rezoning request. Please use this case to begin fulfilling what the citizens of Cary had thought was mandated by the 2040 Plan, to consider the natural environment's contribution to the moral and tangible quality of life in Cary. Thank you for your attention.
Thank you, Dr. Wilson. Any more calls?
No.
I'll close the public comment portion of this public hearing and open it up to council members for questions or comments. I'll recognize Councilmember Robinson.
Thank you very much, Mayor. I appreciate it. I would say this is one of those situations where you have so much you want to say, you're going to trip over yourself, so I apologize in advance if I'm not organized in my comments. Just going back historically to the Cary Park subdivision, which, for those of you who were around at the time, remember it was first called Cary Glen. And when the town entered into the agreements with the developer, a lot of negotiations occurred. The developer was going to give us certain things, we were going to release him or the group from certain requirements. I have occasionally been asked by people who live in Cary Park why there's no sidewalk along Yates Store Road on the southern part of the neighborhood. That was one of those things that we relieved him from having to do in exchange for other things. One of those elements was the open space dedication. So it's disingenuous for this land to have been sold and not donated to the HOA as it should have been. And I feel for Mr. Patel or for the family that has this ownership of this land now. I believe that whomever sold this land was wrong in doing so and really duped an unsuspecting buyer. It never should have happened. Unfortunately, we can't, we can't help that situation and do wrong by our citizens to accomplish that. And by taking away open space that has been already designated, that's completely wrong for our citizens. And it was really kind of intriguing to me when I was reading the staff report, and it's like 14 member residents met, and they expressed concerns with lot sizes and provision of buffers. And I was like, were they not aware that this was open space? I mean, I don't know how much information was given to them, but the issue is not 2,500 square feet of gathering open space. The issue is a bigger issue of, is this right for us to be doing this in the first place? Should we even be rezoning land that has been previously set aside as open space? And I would say, absolutely, we should not. I would like to think that this is a case in isolation, but as Ms. Bush and I were discussing earlier, we had another request in the similar vein, to rezone land that had been previously designated as open space for residential. And I think this might be the type of development pressure that we see in the future. As land becomes more scarce, people are going to look around and go, I don't think anybody appreciates that open space right there. What if I just took some of that and put 12 homes there or whatever? Let me stick eight townhomes there. But that's not the promise that we made to our citizens. We promised them high quality of life, and when we approve developments, all of those developments in coordination become that promise. And this open space should remain open space. And as much as I feel for the situation that Mr. Patel or his family is in, in owning it, it's not right for us to take that away from the citizens. I think we need to look at this, I think we need to give the applicant the due process. You know, we should allow it to go to the Planning and Zoning Board, because that's our process. We should give him every right to take it through. But I can tell him or the applicant's group, I would never approve this. I would never vote for this. And I think that we need to look holistically as we approve new developments that designate land for open space. Are we taking the right precautions to make sure that it doesn't come back to us someday in the future for a rezoning request? And what is that process? Clearly, what we're doing right now, or what we did, you know, between 2000 and 2020 hasn't worked, because we've had two requests for it so far. Thankfully, that group said, ooh, okay, I didn't realize it was going to be that offensive. We're not going to go forward with this. But I think that this is DOA, in my opinion, and I think we need to really be clear about that, so that the applicant isn't confused and thinks, well, maybe I have a shot. And by the way, 2,500 square feet of community gathering space to compensate for nine and a half acres of open space is not a compensation. And I had to ask our staff this week, how big is this room? The room that we're sitting in is 5,000 square feet. So the community gathering space would be half the size of this room. And when you think about it that way, you're like, holy cow, that's not very much, you know, given the fact that it was nine and a half acres of open space that was commonly enjoyed by all.
Okay.
Yeah, since we also talked about this, although I wasn't on council at the time, you know, one of the tenets of this council has been that we often, or developers often use open space to help justify density somewhere else, which is exactly what this was used for. Because it wasn't turned over to the HOA, I don't know if there's something that we need to ensure when we see a PDP where they say, we are going to give this all to the HOA. I don't know why this one property wasn't turned over to the HOA like all of the rest. And I think that disingenuous was the perfect word that I had written down as well, you know. There are other words as well, insincere, you know, all different kinds of words. And I feel a bit sorry for the new property owner, not knowing the history of this, yet I think there's enough indication, because it was already through rezoning where it's now open space, that totally conveys what this council, whether it was a different council back then, would like to see. The other thing that I often hear from Councilmember Smith and the mayor is, is there anything, just to give this feedback, as Ms. Top asked us, is there anything that would be better? What could they do to move this forward? And I can't think of anything that is better than open space, which was the original promise to the neighbors and the community. So from my perspective, I believe that this is getting a public hearing. Honestly, I appreciate Councilmember Robinson said, oh, it should get its day with everyone. But honestly, I can't think of anything better. So I would say, if I had the power, I would stop it now. But I understand there's a process by which this goes through, but I do think that they're getting hearing, and I would certainly hope that the applicant would consider withdrawing it and not wasting the precious time of our staff and our citizens who weigh in.
Very good. Excuse me. Very good. Other comments? Mr. Yerha or Mr. Smith?
Yeah. The beauty of the eloquence I just heard on my left and my right is, I don't have anything to say, so thank you for making those comments, you know. You know, we joke sometimes about holding our nose and making difficult decisions. I, you know, from my perspective, that's not a problem on this one. This is, the biggest surprise, Ms. Laurie, that you brought up is, you're absolutely right. When we make, on these complex developments, we make these compromises where there are more density somewhere else. And if this goes through the due process, if, you know, if we can get some staff feedback on that as this goes forward, excuse me, I'd like to, I'd like, that's a very good question to ask. And, you know, possibly, we even, before we make a final decision, we revisit, what about all those other concessions we made, like giving up on sidewalk on one side and so forth? This has a lot of hurdles. And the biggest surprise to me is the lack of it being turned over to an HOA. You have a development of this size and this complexity and this beauty, I think it was a given. I wanted to make sure that we learn from this, you know, assuming that we don't approve this. I want to make sure that we stop this from happening. And so both of you brought up great questions, the questions of what were the compromises made back then, why did it never go to the HOA? There may be answers, but I don't, I don't see what those are at this point in time. I, you know, I'm struggling to keep an open mind, but on this one, it is really hard to see anything that the applicant do to mitigate its original intent. So you've got a high hurdle to get over as you move forward. And I, again, in closing, I think the proximity to the proposed, at that time, 540 was a key, key component as we were looking at that give and take. We wanted to protect them there, and that's why we did that. So at the risk of just starting to be repetitive, I'll just leave it at that. I think folks get the gist of my feelings on this.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Ms. Lou or Mr. Yerha or Mayor Protim France, anything to add?
I agree with all the comments that have been said by Councilmember Robinson, Bush, and Councilmember Smith. And I wanted to emphasize that our commitment to our citizens, that, you know, we want to keep Cary green, and this is one of the actionable items that we are committed to doing, preserve the open space. And actually, we will be aggressively acquiring open space, hoping to, you know, create more open space, you know, for the citizen to enjoy, for all the future generations to enjoy. So we are setting the precedent here today, hoping in the future, when potential buyers consider buying the land, they won't be tricked into, you know, the false hope that they may get the land to be rezoned. And I feel for the applicant. And at this point, you know, I agree with other council members, and it would probably be best to withdraw and, you know, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Yerha, anything to add?
Yes, I guess I'd like to see a compelling reason for every rezoning that comes before us, and I can't find one for this. Losing already designated open space in favor of 15 houses in an area where houses are not in short supply is something that is not on my to-do list and would be very unlikely to get my support.
Thank you, Mr. Yerha. This is going to P and Z, and usually at this point with our council, actually, in the 20 years I've been on council, I very rarely have heard a council that's not that open-minded about a proposal. That's how seriously deficient this proposal is. And so it has incredible hurdles to get over to even be attractive, and that would still make it difficult to pass. I just can't, as Mr. Smith said earlier, I can't imagine anything you can propose that would be better than open space. Anyway, this will go to the Planning and Zoning Board for their review and recommendation. It will come back to us at a later date for a vote. In the meantime, if you provided comments tonight, or if you were listening tonight, I recommend that you follow this by checking on our website, or you can contact Ms. Grandin. She'll be glad to answer any of the questions that you may have. And share anything you would like with council at any time. Please don't hesitate to reach out to us with email, call, let us know what you think at the next public speaks out. And if council chooses, we could have another public hearing, but on this matter, I highly doubt that we'll have another public hearing. And if so, you would be notified. So this will be at council at a future date, and will be at Planning and Zoning Board before it comes back to us. All right, we'll move now to the fourth and last public hearing, and that's 19REZ 28 Wake Med Medical Office Park Amendment. Assistant Planning Director Deborah Grandin will once again introduce the item. Council will not take action on this rezoning. It's going to be referred to our Planning and Zoning Board for their review and recommendation, and we'll see it at a future meeting. Ms. Grandin.
Thank you, Mayor. This next item is a request to amend the Wake Medical Office Preliminary Development Plan on approximately 10.5 acres located at the 200 block of Asheville Avenue. The site is located north of the intersection with Tryon Road and adjacent to the southern line of US Highway 1. The property was zoned to mixed-use district in 2018 with rezoning case REZ 30, which included a preliminary development plan, and that allowed for redevelopment of an existing aging medical office park. The revised preliminary development plan proposes a maximum of 240,000 square feet of medical office, which is just under the square footage that was permitted with the original plan. Changes to the plan are primarily related to site layout, and they include shifting one medical office building from the west side of the site to the east, retaining two existing office buildings on the site. The parking deck is slightly larger than the original proposed parking deck and is brought closer to US 1, but I'd like to point out that no buffer reduction from the preliminary development plan is proposed. Site circulation has been modified. A more centralized community gathering area is provided. Modifications to the preliminary development plan have not changed from those originally approved and include the removal of two champion trees, a reduction of the highway corridor buffer to an average width of 43 feet, a maximum building height of 90 feet, and relief from community appearance manual standards. All of these items were approved with the previous case, and those modifications will remain. So since the proposed changes to the preliminary development plan consist primarily of adjustments to the site layout, the plan policies that were addressed when this request came before you previously remain consistent. The proposal supports policies in the work, shape, and move chapters, and remains appropriate as a use with use and intensity for a destination center. A neighborhood meeting was held in February. There were no nearby property owners in attendance, and we've not received any calls or emails on this request. Notice of the public hearing was mailed to property owners within 800 feet of the subject property, which exceeds state and LDO requirements. This concludes staff's presentation, and the applicant's representative, Mr. Richard Brown with Kim Lee Horn and Associates, is on the line to share his comments on the request. And then following his comments and the public hearing, I will be available for your questions. Thank you.
Ms. Grandin. Mr. Ralph.
This is Richard Brown with Kim Lee Horn. Assume you can hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, Mayor and council. Appreciate the opportunity to be with you this evening, representing Healthcare Trust of America, the developer who has been involved with this application since the inception, and appreciate Ms. Grandin's thorough presentation. I don't really have, won't belabor the presentation with any additional information, just to underscore maybe a couple of things that Ms. Grandin pointed out. In the, in the presentation, we do feel like this is, remains very consistent and, in fact, may enhance some abilities to be, to reinforce consistency with the, with the comp plan and the move and shape chapters of the, of the, move, work and shape chapters of the Cary Community Plan. This is essentially, as Ms. Grandin mentioned, the emphasis of this amendment is really associated with some... associated with some site layout needs in order to keep two existing buildings on the campus for a bit longer than the applicant and the developer originally intended due to some longer-term leases. But as she noted, collectively with the existing buildings and new buildings, there will not be an increase in the entitled square footage heights or any of the standards that were originally proposed in 2000, with the 2017 case. The open space, as she noted, is more centrally located. That has not been reduced. Again, it is, I think, a more for, creates more of an urban central location for the campus, and the proposed PDP revision also may, may open up an opportunity in the future when these existing buildings do, do become redeveloped, to develop those in a manner that will reinforce, again, the urban form. The only, the only other item they'd be interested in as you look at this, council members, is the existing medical office, or the, I'm sorry, the Phase 1 Medical Office Building and Phase 1 of the parking deck is currently under construction, almost complete. Here, probably in the next two months will be, Phase 1 will be completed, so this is essentially partially, partially built, some of, some of the entitlement. And this, this will set it up for a development of Phase, of the Phase 2 Office Building, maybe sooner, the opportunity to do that sooner than previously anticipated. Again, we agree with staff's representation of this, the consistency of this plan. We're not modifying really any, or adding any additional design standard modifications, but we do appreciate the opportunity to be here tonight, certainly look forward to any comments that you may offer, and happy to answer any questions that you have. Thank you.
Now is the time for the public hearing for 19 REZ 28 Wake Med Medical Office Park Amendments. At this time, I'll call on Deborah Granton to summarize any comments we have received. Any comments received before noon today were emailed to council, and we have a printed copy here at our desk. Ms. Granton.
Thank you, Mayor. We have not received any comments on this case.
Thank you. Okay, have we, any callers on the line?
No callers.
No callers on the line, okay. I'll close the public comment portion and open it up to council members for questions or comments. Seeing none, this will be forwarded to our Planning and Zoning Board for their review and recommendation, and it will return to us at a future date. We now move to our only discussion item. It is the Wake Bus Rapid Transit Western Corridor. Transit Administrator Kelly Blasey will present the staff report. Council may take action this evening. Ms. Blasey.
Good evening, Mayor and council. It is my pleasure to be with you virtually this evening to discuss the Wake BRT Western Corridor. This is an important step that will allow this project to enter the design phase and become eligible for federal funding. We appreciate your time and interest in this project, as many of you have attended our public outreach events and even traveled with us to Richmond, Virginia, to tour their Pulse BRT system. I am excited to share with you the preferred alignment for the Wake BRT Western Corridor. But first, a quick refresher. Bus Rapid Transit, or BRT, is a high-frequency transit service that runs on dedicated bus lanes where possible, so that bus operators can bypass traffic to avoid schedule delays. Stops feature pedestrian-friendly amenities such as raised platforms with level boarding, off-board fare collection systems, and enhanced passenger technology options such as arrival countdown signage and trip planning tools. Once we get through this initial step of selecting the alignment, we'll move into the design phase, and that's the fun part of planning what all of this will look like. In that next phase, we will have the opportunity to better define detailed elements of the design, including improved pedestrian access and many other user upgrades. The Wake Transit Plan identifies four BRT corridors covering 20 miles to connect communities throughout the county. A planning effort known as the Major Investment Study, or MIS, identified Western Boulevard as the preferred route from downtown Raleigh to a point near Jones Franklin Road. From that point, three alternatives were studied for completion of the corridor into downtown Cary. These include Chapel Hill Road, East Chatham Street, and Carytown Boulevard. The town of Cary and the city of Raleigh collaborated with regional partners to further evaluate the options identified by the MIS. This resulted in several important discoveries, allowing us to eliminate options and ultimately select a locally preferred alternative, or LPA, for your consideration. The recommended LPA merges the best attributes of the Carytown Boulevard corridor with the best attributes of the East Chatham Street corridor. These include new developments at Carytown Center and Fenton, which will provide increased ridership potential, significant development opportunities along Southeast Maynard Road and East Chatham Street, and generous road right-of-way on Carytown Boulevard, which allows for more dedicated lanes and BRT station locations. The preferred route also supports the importance of Southeast Maynard Road as a major transportation corridor, while eliminating the conflict with existing rail right-of-way on East Chatham Street. Endorsement of the LPA, including mode, alignment, and termini points, is an important step in the planning process for the Wake BRT Western Corridor. Due to the multi-jurisdictional nature of this project, Cary must first endorse the portion of the LPA that is within town limits, before the city of Raleigh can recommend the full LPA to Campo later this fall. These actions are required for us to initiate project development and move into the design phase, in addition to pursuing funding through the Federal Transit Administration's Small Starts Grant Program. All project costs are included in the Wake Transit Plan, which also assumes support from Small Starts federal grant opportunities. This project bears no fiscal impact to the town of Cary, although it does provide increased economic opportunities through surrounding transit-oriented development. It is the recommendation of staff that council endorsed the Wake BRT Western Corridor Recommended LPA, including mode, alignment, and termini points, to allow for consideration by the city of Raleigh and Campo. The recommended LPA supports the Imagine Cary Community Plan Vision for Eastern Cary Gateway and downtown special planning areas. This concludes the presentation, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Blasey. Questions or comments for Ms. Blasey?
I have a question. Is it too soon for our staff to explain to us how we'll have a dedicated corridor on East Chatham Street? Because it's, I can see how parts of it would be, would be able to do that, but it seems like parts of it would be too constrained to be able to have a dedicated BRT line.
So the question is related to dedicated lanes on East Chatham Street, and we haven't gotten into that phase of the process that will come in this next phase, where we will get into the detailed aspects of the design.
Other questions?
I mean, it's a good question and a good concern, given the layout of the existing road and where the buildings are located. I probably see that, that being difficult, at least in that core area. But I think the majority of East Chatham Street, you could probably see a dedicated lane.
Yeah.
It's just right when you get down into, you know, start getting to, close to Walker Street, it gets really challenging right about there.
Yeah, that's what I'm concerned about.
So, I mean, I think that the proposed route is, I think, I agree with Ms. Blasey's comments, best of both worlds, you know? Picking up everything that's happening at the Carytown Center in Fenton, and then going down Maynard, and then coming through the core of downtown Cary, I think that's, I hate to use the term win-win, because I never believe it, but, but, you know, if there is one, this might be it. So this is exciting. It's been a long time coming, a lot of time, a lot of effort, a lot of work from our staff and, and this council, and our community, and just everyone involved, and it's, it's good to finally see us hit the next step, so.
Other comments?
What's the timeline for this project? Do we know?
Certainly. So we'll move into the design phase next, and then we're expecting to be able to move into construction by around 2024, with hopefully completion and beginning service by 2027.
Thank you.
Ms. Robinson.
Ms. Blasey, I have another question. I love the fact that it goes down Carytown Boulevard. I think that's excellent. It's going to hit two major developments that we're putting a lot of investment in and our stakeholders are putting a lot of investment in. But we want to make sure that citizens are going to be safe, you know, getting off the buses, getting on the buses. With the Wake money that we have, the transit money, will we be able to use that for any kind of treatments for pedestrian movements, such as grade-separated crossings or tunnels or anything like that, that would help people to be able to navigate that busy road?
That is something that will definitely be considered as part of the design process. We know that that concern has been mentioned, and it's something that will be considered as we move into this next phase of design.
It depends.
It depends. Maybe not.
Other questions? If not, entertain a motion. And there's a document at your seat for the motion, by the way.
Oh, no, just on the, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah.
Oh, sorry.
Make a motion that we approve staff recommendation.
Second?
It's a motion and a second discussion. Roll call vote, Mr. Yurha.
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem France.
Aye.
Councilmember Lou.
Aye.
Councilmember Robinson.
Aye.
Councilmember Bush.
Aye.
I vote aye as well, and it is unanimous. Thank you, Ms. Blasey.
Thank you.
We're, we're ready to go into closed session, so I'll recognize Councilmember Bush for a motion.
Pursuant to GS 143, 318, 11A, 1, 3, and 5, I move that we hold a closed session to instruct the town staff concerning the position to be taken by or on behalf of the town in negotiating the price and material terms of contract or proposed contract for acquisition of property owned by 4224 Green Level West Road Lynn Carter Johnson, and to consult with attorneys employed by and or retained by the town in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorneys and the town, among other things, the council expects to hear advice concerning the following in regards to Purdue Pharma LP et al., case number 923649, banker SDNY and Purdue bankruptcy cases, and to prevent the disclosure of information that is privileged and are confidential by GS 1321.2 or 14331810E.
Second.
Roll call vote, Mr. Yurha.
Aye.
Aye.
Ms. Lou.
Aye.
Ms. Robinson.
Aye.
Mr. Smith.
Aye.
Mr. Bush.
Aye.
We'll reconvene our council meeting at this time. We have no other business this evening, so therefore I declare the meeting adjourned. Thank you.